Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, present here and on Zoom. I would like to make mention that councilperson Scarfa will be watching the meeting on Zoom. She's not going to be able to respond during the meeting, but she is watching on Zoom. Notice of this meeting was given to the township clerk and posted on Township bulletin board and Township website calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Leisure. This meeting has been properly noticed to the to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and no new matters will start after 10:30 PM. Ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation of God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The next planning board regular meeting will be held July 2, 2025 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Roll call Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Mr. Scarfa? Mr. Klein? Mr. Wooks? Has a woman's scarpa via Zoom, correct?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Guerino?
Present.
Chairman Bagoff?
Here. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the first thing we have is some administrative things to do. I make a motion, we adopt the February 12, 2025 West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Are any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. On the motion, Yamalat?
It's Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
It's just not here. It's a woman's coat. Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guerino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. Motion carries. The minister adopted. I make a motion, we adopt the March 12, 2025 West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor McCartney seconds. Do I see any addition, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none. On the motion, Yamalat?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guerino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. Minister adopted. I make a motion, we adopt the March 12, 2025 West Orange Planning Board Draft Executive Minutes.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Guerino seconds. Do I see any addition, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none. On the motion, Yamalat?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guerino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. Minister adopted. I make a motion, we adopt the resolution PB 25-02 Orange Prospect LLC Draft Resolution with Conditions. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Guerino seconds. Do I have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Yamalat?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guerino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. The resolutions adopted. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in the township professionals?
I'll swear in the first place.
Okay, if you could each put your names on the record.
Gerard Hanks.
Ryan McNeil.
Thank you. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to offer Mr. Frank, sorry, Captain Frank Norberini of the West Orange Fire Department to be a Class II member of our planning board. Would you please stand, raise your right hand?
Mr. Norberini, please. Thank you. I solemnly swear
You solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith
and I will bear true faith
and allegiance
and allegiance
to the same
to the same
and to the governments established
to the governments established
in the United States
the United States
and in this state
and in this state
under the authority of the people
under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear
that I will faithfully
that I will faithfully
impartially
impartially
and justly
and justly
perform all of the duties of
perform all of the duties of
planning board member
planning board member
to the best of my ability
to the best of my abilities
so help me God
so help me God. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
The next order of business is an ordinance review 2925-25, an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Section 1110, outdoor cafes in the B1 and B2 and PC districts. Outdoor cafes in the B1, J, B2, 0, PC districts, ordinance 2925-25, master plan consistency review. Our planner, Mr. Hazel, has provided a report. Mr. Hazel, would you describe to the board your findings, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I find that in my review of the proposed ordinance relative to the township's master plan that the proposed ordinance is consistent with the master plan. The proposed ordinance proposes to amend Section 11 of Chapter 25, basically adding standards to the existing criteria for the allowance of outdoor cafes within the township. So my opinion is that this proposed ordinance is in compliance with the vast.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions about this ordinance?
I have a
Are we open for discussion? Okay, good.
Yes, we're going to open it for discussion. Mr. Alpert?
So I have a couple. The first is, to me, the item regarding times, I'm trying to find it here, J, right? Should not exceed the hours of 12 PM, noon to 10 PM. That seems like a late start to me. I think a lot of places might want to offer breakfast, brunch. You know, something more in keeping with that might make sense. I also don't know if it creates a problem, if that's legally, if that's a, if it creates a problem, if that's different than whatever's in the noise ordinance for things like, you know, lawn mowing and such. So I don't know about that. The other thing is there's that bit in the back, item N, effective this date, the owner or operator of a restaurant that does, that does not sell alcoholic beverages seeking to utilize. So if you don't sell alcohol at your restaurant, there's all these conditions that apply to you in terms of a plan for litter control, garbage, the cleaning of fixtures and grounds. If you do have a liquor license, obviously you can't sell alcohol in the outside portion, I think. But if you do have a liquor license, it seems the way this is worded, that doesn't apply, and you don't have to have a litter plan or anything. That seems like something that needs to be tightened up.
That's what I had. Thank you. Mayor McCartney?
I had the same question about the hours of operation and about the use of amplified music outdoors. You know, I mean, this all started because of COVID, and people were taking advantage of their outdoor spaces. And of course, so many of our restaurants are located in residential zone. I understand what the council's trying to do with this ordinance, but it seems to me that we're not really helping the businesses by limiting and being as restrictive as this ordinance makes it out to be. So how do you, how do you say you want it to be respectful to the neighbors and time limits? There should be time limits. I'm trying to, I'm thinking out loud, but I just feel that we need to be respectful to the neighbors, but also to the business owners.
Vice Chairman?
They both covered the questions I had and the topics I was concerned about.
Mr. Cardoza?
I'm just wondering, does, does the ordinance, and I apologize for not having this in front of me right now, make a distinction between live music?
Music?
No, music in general? Okay.
Just as amplified music?
Amplified music.
Okay. So I'll speak against this. There are some parts of this ordinance that make sense, that are for health, safety, and welfare. There are some that are specific for business in town, and the master plan specifically speaks about the promotion of business in town. And these businesses have been around for over 20, 25 years. And now we're sort of curtailing their hours of operation, and it may not have been the intent of the council to do these things, but it is the practical intent of the ordinance. And one of the things, now that we're talking about this, why can't we have upholstered furniture outside? So I think the ordinance has become very, very specific, and I don't hear the ewen cry from people all over town saying that there's too much noise and we're having problems with the businesses. We're trying to promote small business in town. The other thing is, there's now a tariff on small business. They have to go in, get a permit, and the permit has another fee. And two years ago, the town introduced the mercantile fee for another $100. So the more fees that we levy on small business, the more difficult it becomes for the small businesses to stay afloat. We have other small businesses that will be coming to town, and not that I am opposed to having people get licenses for times during the year. They're not going to be out all year long. This is pretty much in the warmer months, so it should be more specific to that. And the last thing is, this is putting this on the doorstep of the zoning official. So everything we have seen, we put on the doorstep of the zoning official. And the zoning official is doing so much work on everything, and we have to also be mindful of the people who work in town. Is this going to change the nature for the better of the people who go to these cafes? If it is, then I would agree with it, and I do agree, again, with some of these things that are for health, safety, and welfare, but prescribing you can't have upholstered furniture, and you can't be there before 12, and you can't have any type of music. The township does have other ordinances for health, safety, and welfare, and the township does have other noise ordinances. There have been other applications before the planning board that have been conditioned on times that music can be played, whether it's live, live, or mechanical. So I would send that back to the council and say, again, if you agree, if you disagree, you'll vote no. If you agree, you'll vote yes. Send it back to the council that we recommend we clean this up and speak to the businesses in town who will be affected by this. And maybe have those businesses come into the council and say what they think and how they can, how we can improve this together. I think this is, that would be the best way to approach this. That's my feeling. So I make a motion that we send up to the council that this ordinance, even though it is consistent with the master plan, has a number of good points and a number of faults, and we recommend that it be revised. And if you want, send it back to us, and we can do it. If you want to do it, you should do it. But we recommend that the businesses that would be affected come to the council or come to the planning board to speak their minds, to make sure that we are not hurting business in a way that we don't understand. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor, it's seconds. So if you vote yes, we will send that to the council. If you vote no, we will not send it to the council, and we will have a vote to see if this is consistent with the master plan. Yamalat, on the motion?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Mr. Norberini?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guerino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. So we will send, Ms. McGovern, would you send a letter to the town council? We understand our planner has said this is consistent with the master plan. These are the issues that we have brought forth. It is now up to you to either move forward with it or send it back to us for additional discussion. Thank you. Application PB 24-01 West Essex Highlands Incorporated, Block 179, Lot 32, Zone IH1, Warner Road. The applicant is proposing to develop a 496-unit inclusionary multifamily residential development on a vacant 120-acre property in the northwest corner of the township. Mr. Plucker for the applicant?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good to see you again. Brian Plucker from the firm of Hutch Manawitz and Plucker, here on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Afrin is out on the hall, so if somebody, oh, you're back. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. You were behind.
Mr. Afrin, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Bruce Afrin.
I'll do this now because it will Good evening. Good evening. Is this working?
Yeah.
Good evening, Bruce Afrin for the objector, We Care, NJ. Good to see everyone again. We have one witness for tonight. It's possible there may be a second witness. I'm not sure yet. That witness is Mark Gallagher of Princeton Hydro, who is testifying as to wetlands ecology and hydrology. Before we did that, I just wanted to raise one housekeeping issue. I don't mean this at all by way of criticism of the applicant. I was just wondering if we roughly know when the supplemental geotechnical report comes in, because that affects some of our planning with our witnesses. If we don't know yet, that's fine. We'll talk later on. Ms. Plucker gestured, I think we don't know yet.
I didn't make any gesture.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll have to get back to him.
Okay, fair enough.
Testing's done.
Okay.
You know, like you and me, we're all busy. We'll have to check.
No, I, I'm fine. Okay. So in terms of planning, witnesses to some degree, hours depend on that, but we'll work, do the best we can. So we have one witness tonight. I'll call Mark Gallagher. Mr. Gallagher?
Mr. Gallagher? Could you put your full name on the record and spell your last name? Could you put your full name on the record and spell your last name?
Mark Gallagher, G-A-L-L-A-G-H-E-R.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I don't know if people can hear me in the back. I know there's, the air conditioning is necessary, but is it okay? Can you hear? Can you hear me? Okay. I'll ask, when Mr. Gallagher begins, I'll ask if he'll speak up just to project, because there is air conditioning. Let me just qualify the witness. Mr. Gallagher, he's been sworn, right? I assume. Thank you. Mr. Gallagher, who are you employed by presently?
I'm the vice president at Princeton Hydro.
Okay, I think you may have to speak up louder. If you pull it in more to you, perhaps.
Better?
Yeah, you can actually use this ultimately when I'm done. And what is your area of focus presently at Princeton Hydro?
It's primarily regulatory compliance and ecological restoration.
Is it ecological restoration?
Correct.
Okay. Now, what is your degree in? What degrees do you hold?
I have a bachelor's degree in biology from Moravian College and a master's degree in ecology from Rutgers University.
Now, I understand you also teach a course at, is it Drexel or Temple?
Temple University.
And what course is that?
Wetland Ecology.
And how long have you taught that course for?
Eight years.
Without going into further, I believe this would qualify the witness in his field of wetlands ecology and hydrology. I could do more, but I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Does anybody, any members of the board have any questions? Let me ask you a question before we get started. What area of the ordinance would his testimony apply to that the planning board can use to make their decision? Is this the body that should be hearing this information?
Well, it relates really in the same way to the prior witnesses who testified as to forest ecology, stormwater management, and the ornithologist. And the principle is very simply, the board has an expert, Mr. DeFeo, who is contracted to provide an environmental appraisal. The applicant signed a settlement agreement agreeing to submit its site plan application to DeFeo for comment for, as for environmental appraisal, and Mr. DeFeo testified pursuant to that. The settlement agreement is a mandatory part of this proceeding, and therefore, this is relevant to environmental evidence that Mr. DeFeo gave. Now, he didn't cover a full range of these subjects, as our witnesses are, and that's the point, that he limited his discussion largely to deer fencing and the impact on regenerating the understory in the woods with deer fencing. But that's not all there is to environmental appraisal. And since the applicant's required to undergo an environmental consultation with Mr. DeFeo, our point is, there is substantial environmental harm and evidence to show that from the project, and all of that's relevant in the way I've described.
I'm going to ask Mr. McNeil. Now, our board engineer is paid for, ladies and gentlemen, the public, our board engineer is paid for
Chairman, you guys can play.
Our board engineer is paid for by the planning board. He is an independent person that looks at all sides, is not involved with the applicant or the objectors. He is charged with looking at information that we present to him and coming back and saying, this is in your purview, or it is in the purview of another regulatory body. If it is not in the purview of the planning board to use that information in their decisions, then it should be somewhere else. If, on the other hand, it is pertinent and we can use it in our decision-making process, then we should hear it. So I'm going to defer, and I'm sorry. I want to qualify you and your expertise. Do you have, have any expertise in stormwater management or exactly what it's going to be, or hydrology?
Yes, exactly. So I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have over 10 years of experience. And in that time, I have reviewed or designed over 100 stormwater management designs, as well as obtained NJDEP land use approvals, including freshwater wetlands, as well as flood hazard area approvals.
Okay. You've heard the description of the testimony to be provided before us. Is this in the purview of the planning board, and can we use it, or is there another regulatory body that should be hearing this?
Before the answer comes forward, I would raise an objection to the question, and the reason for that is, and I mean no disrespect to you or the engineer, the reason for that is the engineer doesn't decide what evidence and testimony is heard by a planning board. Number one, that's for the planning board to decide if it wishes to rule in or out evidence, while not allow a witness to be heard. But the engineer doesn't have any special role here in telling the board what it should hear or not hear, nor is the engineer a lawyer. Even Ms. McGovern doesn't have the power to make such decisions. So that the engineer, not being a lawyer, is not in a position to say what this board should hear jurisdictionally, what it should not. That's outside the purview of an engineer.
I've asked for the engineer's opinion based on his expertise. The board will then talk amongst ourselves in the public view and decide based on what he provides, information he provides us. I understand what you're saying. We're not asking him to say yes or no for us. We're asking him, in his opinion, can the board use this information to make a decision? Or should it be used by another governing body to make a decision?
And my basis of my objection is very simple, that I don't know what the engineer will say, but it's my job to object before I hear something I don't like. I can't hear something I don't like and say, wait, I object. The point is that the engineer is not a lawyer. The engineer does not have expertise in the jurisdiction of different bodies. Now, if I asked Mr. Gallagher to speak to an engineering question, he would not have the basis to give an opinion, nor would the board be justified in hearing it. In the same way, a jurisdictional question as to what type of evidence goes before what body is not within the professional training of an engineer. And he doesn't have that authority. So you're asking his opinion, but you're asking the opinion of an expert who's not an expert in that field. And so therefore, he doesn't have the right, and the board shouldn't be consulting him on a jurisdictional question. So I do raise the objection.
I'll restate it. We're asking him to give us an opinion as to is the information to be provided relevant to making our decision?
It's exactly the same point. How, how can the engineer decide an issue of relevance as to an objector's position? It's not the engineer's purview to make rulings on whether evidence is proper or not proper. The only one who can make that ruling is you, Mr. Bagoff, because that's your job as chair ultimately. But certainly, an engineer has no purview to say whether evidence is relevant to a site plan application. It's outside. I've never heard of such a request.
Stick around.
Also, the evidence hasn't been heard yet either. I, you know, so.
Right. So, I'm sorry, Ms. McGovern.
The board chair, I don't think you listened. The board chair is not suggesting that Mr. McNeil is going to make a decision as to evidence. He's asking him to give the board information so that the board can make that determination as to whether this is useful or not. He's just going to flesh out what, what types of information are helpful or relevant to this application.
My clients are not bound by an engineer's opinion about what's helpful to the board in understanding the objector's position or the applicant's case. So even though it's being put to the engineer in the context of, well, we just want your opinion to guide us, it would be like asking Mr. Gallagher, a wetland scientist, to give expertise on whether or not a building can sit on the ridge without collapsing. The engineer is not a lawyer and is not someone who has expertise in relevance. These are evidentiary questions, and we're a quasi-judicial body here, and Mr. Bagoff, you are the one who ultimately makes these decisions. But asking the engineer to give his view of what is relevant is simply another way of asking the engineer to make a legal judgment. It's clearly outside their purview. I've never heard of a board requesting an engineer give such an opinion.
That's why we ask the engineer for their opinion, and then we listen to the opinion, and we make a decision based on their opinion. That's why they're experts.
If you're making a decision of admissibility of evidence and jurisdiction based on the opinion of a civil engineer, then you're asking to be guided with expertise from someone who doesn't have that expertise. An engineer doesn't have expertise on evidentiary relevance or jurisdiction, administrative jurisdiction. Well, I'd also make an additional point that someone just made known to me that an engineer is not a wetland scientist, an ecologist, or acting in any related field. And therefore, the relevance finding of the engineer really cannot guide the board, because the engineer is not an expert in this field. I, I spoke as you were consulting. I don't know if you heard what I said, but therefore, he's not an expert in this field anyway.
We have to be able to take the information and make sure that we can use it based on our ordinance and the law. If we spend time listening to information that we can't use based on our ordinance and the law, it was information that's on the record, but it's not, it may or may not be relevant. So what I will do to meet in the middle is start, I know there's a PowerPoint presentation. We will listen, and we'll go from there. How's that?
Can I just take one second? My mother had an issue.
Go right ahead. Absolutely.
Figuring that out. The PowerPoint presentation, Gemmalet, can we send it over to Joe so he can, or you already did that? Oh, you already have it. Oh, you're way ahead of me.
Surprise.
Just say the word.
Okay, so while, while, what is that exhibit marking then? Oh, 14. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, for hearing me out. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, may I, before Mr. Afrin begins? I, I think I know where the board was trying to go, and I just want to state from my record that Mr. Gallagher, if he's being qualified as a wetlands expert, the applicant would object, and subject to the board's great discretion to allow him to testify. But wetlands is a very specific area that's regulated by a very specific statute, the Freshwater Wetlands Protections Act. And the last section of that act, it's NJSA 13:9-B-30, pretty much says that no town, no subdivision of a town such as a planning board can make any rules or regulations with respect to wetlands. So we would say that that statute and the DEP, which has conferred the power by that statute, is the body that has exclusive jurisdiction over wetlands. So we would object to the testimony and the board considering any testimony regarding wetlands, which isn't within the exclusive purview of the DEP. And I just want to address one more comment that Mr. Afrin addressed. And he's addressed it previously, that, you know, Mr. DeFeo was retained by this board. He's mentioned in the settlement agreement. And I just want to make clear, there's a statement that, you know, he has to issue an environmental report. And I'm just going to read from the settlement agreement. It's Section 2.5.1, under completeness. It says, after it talks about the submission and when that's deemed complete, "In addition, the applicant shall submit all plans to DeFeo and Associates, the township's environmental consultant, for review and comment, and that we shall meet with him in good faith regarding location of trees." I'm paraphrasing. The settlement agreement also specifically references that the applicant in this application was exempt from any kind of environmental impact statement under the ordinance. And with all due respect to the witnesses that have recently testified on behalf of the objector group, such as Mr. DeVito about the trees and the birds. Those are items that are typically required as part of NEIS. So the applicant is just going to state for the record that it seems that the objector group is seeking this board to consider information in connection with the application that the application was explicitly exempted from by the town council by way of the settlement, by way of the court-approved settlement agreement. Thank you.
I appreciate Mr. Plucker's comments. I assumed he would address the issue in a similar way as he did. I would just note that although the ordinance does release, at least, I don't have it in front of me, but let's, let's assume for the sake of argument, most environmental constraints are all released under the ordinance. Nevertheless, and this is the fundamental point, the applicant signed voluntarily a settlement agreement agreeing to submit to an environmental appraisal in this site plan application. So regardless of what the ordinance So regardless of what the ordinance does say, the settlement agreement that the applicant voluntarily signed and agreed to does commit the applicant to an environmental, the application to an environmental appraisal. And that's the point. The applicant voluntarily did that in the settlement agreement.
And just for the record, the planning board was not a signatory or participant in any settlement agreement, and we're going to consider the IH1 zone only. So let us not talk anymore about the settlement agreement.
With respect, I must respectfully disagree because the settlement agreement binds the applicant to submitting to a site plan application and binds the applicant to submitting to the environmental appraisal. And so whether the planning board is a party to it or not, the applicant assumed those duties.
Mr. Plucker.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Mr. Affrin, when you say we submitted to an environmental appraisal, are you referring to any provision in the settlement agreement other than the one I just read?
No, but I think that's good enough. In addition, WEHI shall submit all plans to DeFeo and Associates, the township's environmental consultant, for review and comment. And following that, the planning board hired Mr. DeFeo under a contract to provide an environmental report. And therefore, anything responsive to environmental issues and harm is relevant and admissible in this hearing.
And the ordinance explicitly exempts an applicant from the items required by an EIS. So why in any instance would Mr. DeFeo consider a review of those items?
Because we.
Sorry, I can finish. And I'm just going to leave that to the board. And if that is the objector's position on the issue, I'm fine with the record on that and the document.
Well, I'll just essentially repeat again because we he agreed to submit to the environmental appraisal.
Okay.
Thank you. As always, I think Mr. Plucker and I appreciate the board's tolerance and listening to us go back and forth.
A nice colloquy. Go right ahead, sir.
Mr. Gallagher, your credentials, I believe, have been accepted. You are now testifying as an expert. Would you prefer to use this microphone so it can be louder and hold it right up? Are you okay?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Mrs. Pluck, I'm going to share this microphone and I'll just shout loud.
Is that better? Good.
I'm told by Spagan that if I speak because of the audience online, I'll have to walk over and share the mic. But I'd rather Mr. Gallagher be heard by everyone. I'll just go over and do that if I have.
No problem. So what I want to discuss today is, one, what a wetland is, and in general, how the wetlands function on the West Essex Highlands site. And that ends up being important because it's the basis for understanding what the impacts are. And we mentioned New Jersey before, and this is New Jersey's definition of a freshwater wetland. An area that is inundated or saturated by surface water or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support and that, under normal circumstances, does support a prevalence of vegetation typically adapted for life in saturated soils.
Yeah, I'm going to hold that microphone close to you now. My camera here.
That's amazing. I'll try to speak louder too. Is that better? All right. It's just there right here. It feels like I'm yelling at them. And I don't want to sound like I'm yelling at you. The vegetation that is growing in a wetland is typically called hydrophytic vegetation. And one of the key elements to this is hydrology. There's three parameters that are required to define a wetland. Vegetation, that hydrophytic vegetation. Soils, being hydroic soils or soils that are saturated long enough that they change their characteristics. As I said, hydrology is the key point. And to be a wetland, the New Jersey manual, 1989 manual, describes that soils have to be saturated within one foot of the soil surface for as little as one week during the growing season. So those areas that are saturated for only one week, really, if you look at a gradient of how wet an area is, an upland doesn't have any of wetland hydrology characteristics. And then there's a wetland boundary. And right at that line is the driest part of a wetland. And that's where the definition sits, that it might only be saturated for one week at the beginning of a growing season. It's because of that that impacts that those forested wetlands can be pretty easily done. And anything that modifies hydrology, either surface flows or groundwater flows, could impact the composition of a wetland, how wetlands function. And one of their key purposes is wetland nutrient transformation. So when nutrients go into a wetland, they're absorbed and they're transformed into a different form that's less problematic in our surface waters, which is one of the main reasons they're protected. This is just a depiction of what I was describing. So this is the groundwater, this dash line. And this is in the spring where it's higher. And then as the growing season progresses, the water table drops. And typically, that happens in spring when the leaves on the trees come out. The trees now are subject to transpiration. So the trees literally pull the water out of the soil and the water table drops. So the wettest time in the growing season is right at the beginning. And this represents that point. And then anything more upland of that wetland, the water table is deeper than one foot. Now, one of the other key elements on any site investigation is an understanding of soils. And this is a soils map taken from the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Web Soil Survey. And I believe it's the same one the applicant used in their submission. And on this site, there's three main soils. The ones with a B are bootin soils. Then there's a Haalden series and a Hasbrook series. There are the three main soil types. The bootin soils are well drained. The Haalden soils are somewhat poorly drained. And the Hasbrook soils are poorly drained. The Hasbrook soils typically would occur or be associated with wetland. This is just the section of their site plan showing basin seven. And you can see this is a Haalden soil. The area with BOGBC, that's a bootin soil. And this doesn't show any Hasbrook. But here are some general descriptions. These soils, a bootin soil, is on steeper slopes, well drained, and it has what they call a fragipan at 29 to 50 inches. And this information is taken out of the web soil survey. And that fragipan is a very dense impermeable layer of soil. It's actually very brittle. And any water that is percolating or infiltrating through the surface soils tends to get hung up or sits on top of that fragipan. And that's a very important part of the soils on this site. The Haalden series is somewhat poorly drained. And the fragipan is a little shallower, you know, 24 to 36 inches. So on this site, the bootin soils tend to be in higher landscape positions. The Haalden soils more on the mid slopes and towards the bottom. And the last one, the Hasbrook soils, are the ones that were another poorly drained soil or the ones associated with wetlands. So Hasbrook soils are poorly drained and that fragipan is now near the surface. And again, that fragipan is a restrictive horizon. That water tends not to move down through. It perched on top. It's another description, Haalden soils. Depth to water table is about seven to 18 inches. And that is because the water is sitting above that restrictive horizon or fragipan. It's perched. And perched water tables within 12 inches of surface in late winter and early spring. And I know I listened to Sean Walsh's testimony and he talked about modeling, but the other term for, that means the same is redoxomorphic features. But that's that change in coloration of the soil to indicate a seasonal high water table. And in a Haalden series, it could be as high as eight inches from the surface. Hasbrook silt low, poorly drained, water table is at the surface. Restrictive horizon, again, that fragipan, 16 to 34 inches. This is just a general depiction of what that fragipan means at the site. And it just so happens that this site is, the soils have developed on glacial till. So how this site functions in general is during a rainfall event, water will either run off or percolate through the soil. But when it goes through the soil and reaches the fragipan, that's where it's perched. And it tends to move downslope. And these fragipans, I showed you with the depth that a fragipan, based on the different soil series, all go down towards the streams that drain the site. And this is what it shows. And it comes down and right about this point is where the fragipan gets close enough to the surface that the water that's perched above it drives that well in hydrology. And ultimately, it's discharged to a stream channel that tends to be somewhere in the middle or low point of those wetlands. This is just a picture of the stream just as it leaves the site. And one of the things that's important, these streams tend to be rock lined. So that fragipan, that water moves along the fragipan and discharges to the stream, and which means the streams are considered to have intermittent flow. So it's likely that in July and August, these streams probably are dry. But in early spring and winter, there's flow.
I just wanted to see if this mic is working. Mr. Spagan gave me a mic here. So you can all hear, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I won't have to interrupt if I need to speak. Thank you.
This is just a plan from the applicant's plan set that shows where all the wetlands are. And you can see the wetlands are in the stippled pattern and the darker gray delineates the state open water or the headwater streams that drain the site. And I think this one helps show better. These are the two main drainage areas on the site. But if you look at the topography, you can see that it kind of creates a bowl on this side. Everything's flowing towards the wetlands and the stream and the western watershed. The eastern watershed of the site is a little different, but up here, you could see the way the contours wrap around the wetlands and stream. It creates that bowl. So all the water, either surface runoff or groundwater, flows towards that wetland and the two streams.
For the record, you're depicting the western drainage area in darker green and the eastern drainage area in lighter green. Is that correct?
That's correct. So with the development, what's happening is this is, the blue indicates the current surface flow patterns towards the wetlands. Pretty much follows the topography from high to low and the wetlands occupy the lower landscape positions on the site. And this is a typical headwater wetland system where, you know, this is the beginning of Canoe Brook. Both streams are the headwaters of Canoe Brook. But with the development, you're going to see that that current pattern now is modified by man and we designed to collect stormwater and be directed toward stormwater facilities or best management practice features, stormwater basins, whatever it might be, for treatment and ultimate discharge. So you can see these pink arrows. It's all collected and ultimately discharged well below a lot of the wetlands on the site. So it's modifying that flow path of surface flow to the wetlands. You can see in the western wetlands, about 32 acres and it's going to be reduced by nine acres or roughly 28% of the flow that goes there. And as I was saying before, these are forested wetlands that tend to be at the drier end of a wetland continuum. So the reduction in surface water flow is an impact. The eastern wetland, similarly, it's 48.4 acres. It's going to be reduced by 16 acres. So 33% of the existing drainage area will be removed. Just another depiction of the post-development drainage area. You can see where the drainage area is reduced and the same with eastern drainage area. In addition to surface water flow paths, the groundwater flow paths are also impacted. Excuse me. And in general, as I was saying, that groundwater hydrology is moving over those restrictive horizons that, in this case, the fragipan. And it's moving downslope towards the wetland, towards the stream. And at minimum, it's being daylighted or it's discharging to the surface at or near the stream. And here's an example of one of the impacts. So this is the wetland. This is basin seven, one of the infiltration basins. So the basin bottom proposed is at 532. The wetland elevation here is 540. So the infiltration basin is eight feet lower than the adjacent wetland. And one of the key issues here is that groundwater flows towards the wetland. With this part of their development, it's changing the hydraulic gradient from the water going to the wetland to the water in the wetland draining towards the basin. Now, there's two things here that are important. One, and we said it before when Sean Walsh testified, somehow their test borings missed the fragipan. They missed that restrictive horizon. But this is an issue that to find, and we'll look at it here. Here's the same basin and their groundwater elevations. They have an estimated seasonal high at elevation 519. And we'll go back. There's, we're at 540, wetland elevation 536. It's like 15 feet lower than the wetland. One of the things to remember in these sites is that wetland hydrology should make sense. That groundwater flow path that follows the contours, follows the topography towards the wetland is just a natural way that these wetlands function. To find a seasonal high water table below the elevation of a wetland, and not by feet, but by, excuse me, more than 10 feet, makes no sense. That water here from that seasonal high water table is not flowing uphill. So this basin does two things. One, it makes no sense, partly because it's lower than the wetland for the seasonal high water table. But two, the designer would have to take into account the water from the wetland and the stream are now being redirected towards the wetland. That's an additional amount of water in the basins that will impact how it functions. And again, we could see the seasonal high water tables here, 528, 522, 519.
Now, are those, whose seasonal high measures are those?
These are from the applicant soil investigation.
Thank you.
And these are just clips from the applicant's plan. The red is just what I added to make it easier for the audience to see. Same basin. No, this is basin seven. And again, here's the wetland, 534. In this stormwater basin, estimated seasonal high is 519. It's only 50 feet away and it should be upslope. The water should be flowing. It's only fifty feet away, and it should be upslope. The water should be flowing towards the wetland. And in this case, it's indicating that seasonal high water table is fifteen feet lower than the wetland. Once again, it just doesn't make sense. Basin seven. Same idea, basin bottom, five forty-four. Wetland, five forty-six here, five forty-eight. Five fifty, contours. Basin bottom, once again, is below the elevation of the wetland. And the test pits show a seasonal high water table of anywhere from five thirty-seven to five forty-two. And we'll go back. Sorry. And look at the wetland elevation, five forty-six, five forty-four. So again, the natural path of water in the, excuse me, in the groundwater should be towards the wetland. It should be a gradient from high and it discharging at the low point in the landscape by the wetland. To have a seasonal high water table below the elevation at a wetland, again, I'll repeat, makes no sense. That was it. Thank you.
I've got a question. When you
Oh, wait, I'll have a follow-up question.
We'll right ahead, sir.
So let me be clear, when you're refining the wetlands figures, I'm sorry, the high water table figures, you were reciting the applicant's calculations.
Yeah, all the estimated seasonal high water tables are from the applicant soil surveys or soil investigations.
Thank you. Just hold that mic up a little bit.
Sorry, I was getting a drink.
Now, Mr. Walsh testified that he thought their elevations were incorrect because the actual water table is higher based on what the modeling should show. Is this similar in direction to what he was saying?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so you're making, you're illustrating now by comparing these measured points from the applicant with the situation in situ with the actual wetlands elevations, uh, high water ta- water tables.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, if you would be kind enough to turn to the slide, they're not numbered with the arrows, the blue and violet pink arrows. That's it. Yes, thank you. I want to be clear that this is understood. The blue arrows represent the current movement of water across the site as conditions presently are. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And your inclusion of the pink arrows shows the movement of water after the development is constructed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, when you say that, well, the, if you look at the lower left-hand corner, well, strike that. If you look in the middle at the top, you see blue arrows moving to the right, essentially perpendicular. Do you see that?
These?
No, on the other side.
Here.
No, no, no.
These.
That's it, yes. On the, on the right side, left side, excuse me, my apologies. On the upper right and left side, there are four arrows in blue. Now, those are directed to the wetlands in the gray modeling. Is that correct?
Correct.
I, modeling, I mean gray speckles on the map. Now, that water after construction will go where on your chart?
Well, some of it, anything outside the development footprint, will continue towards the wetland. But anything below the ridge line that would normally or currently flows towards the wetland will be redirected.
Now, those four blue arrows on the left side, those can be redirected?
The upper part of those arrows, yes, because it starts at the ridge over here somewhere.
Okay.
So this is the part that's lost.
I see. So that's why there's more drainage area lost on the eastern side than the western.
That's correct.
And I see the pink arrows on the lower left-hand corner going into the basin. You see that?
Yes, here.
Yes. And then there's an arrow going off chart. That's going back into the stream at the bottom. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I understand you to be saying that the water that would normally flow across into the wetland is being deviated away down to the bottom. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, if we look at the center, again, we see, and if you look in the lower part of the chart, in the center, there's a speckled area in gray. That's a wetland, correct? That's it.
In the center, yes, the stippled area.
Yeah, the stippled area. Sorry, that was what I was Um, now there are blue arrows, again, I think it's four of them in the center going right to that stippled area. You see that?
Yes.
Okay. Now that represents the current flow of water into the wetlands. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, looking at where those arrows begin, what will be the difference in water flow after this is constructed, based on the pink arrows?
Well, the surface flow is all collected by the stormwater system and redirected to different BMPs. There could be pervious pavement parking lots or to this basin that's down
But it will not go into the stippled area in the lower center. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And again, on the far right side, again, in the far eastern part of the drainage area, there are a series of blue arrows again going to a stippled area. Would your testimony as to that area be the same?
Yes, it would.
Now, what is the effect ecologically of losing a substantial portion of the normal water that drains to these wetlands today?
Well, as I said, one, it's there's less water, less surface water runoff getting to the wetlands. But the groundwater hydrology is equally as important, if not more important. And some of the areas, it's not just cut off. And I'll give an example, like for groundwater flow, it would be following the same general path as these blue arrows. So you have less surface flow, but this building just to build a large structure like this is going to completely eliminate groundwater flow towards that well.
Toward the center wetland in the bottom?
Correct.
Okay. Again, you're referring to the, um, the winged orange structure in the middle, correct?
That's correct.
Now, so you're saying that water, if you go back to the chart with the, I think it was the orange fragile pan line. Do you recall that chart? That's it. Um, you said the groundwater movement. Now I see a word that says permeable layer. Then there's a gray area with arrows. Then there's the orange fragile pan line. What does this relate to in terms of groundwater movement to the, to the water, to the wetlands and streams? How does this relate?
Because of the restrictive horizon or fragile pan, that even though water might move downward in the surface layers, once it hits the fragile pan, it starts to move laterally. And that's what's represented in the gray colored here is the saturated zone.
Is this what you mean by groundwater movement?
Correct.
Okay, can you, sorry. And so the discharge point there would be similar to the discharge point on the chart where the stippled area is in the center. Is that correct?
Yeah, this groundwater flow that follows similar path is the blue arrows is just a slower moving water that the rainwater has percolated into the ground and then moved over the fragile pan slowly down to the stream.
Now, I think we all understand the groundwater movement, because that's stormwater that goes across the site.
Yes.
In terms of losing the groundwater, you refer to the construction of the building. What does that do physically to the movement of groundwater and its ability to do that? You explain that.
Well, in the orange building, again, we were talking about this kind of somewhat U-shaped building. As this blue arrow, as the water that would be below ground would hit the building, it would tend to mound on the up gradient side. And then tends to be a shadow. There's no water on the down gradient side. This building would essentially cut off all that groundwater flow to the well.
And by U-shaped building, you mean the one in the center? There's another U-shaped building on the upper part of the chart.
Correct, the one that's in the center and south of the road.
Thank you. And, um, now, when wetland areas lose, say, twenty-eight percent, thirty-three percent, whatever it may be of the drainage, what does that do typically to the ecology of those sites?
Well, the one key thing is there'd be less water to drive the hydrology that makes it a wetland. So we can anticipate that some of those currently wetland areas will be drier. And especially the ones that are more on the edge will probably become uplands over time.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
Will become an upland. They'll no longer have enough water to drive the hydrology needed to be a wetland.
And so when they change from wetland to upland, what does that do to the flora, for example, that typically would grow there?
Be a change in the plant species composition of the wetland.
And does that affect fauna?
There's an element of that, especially in the wetter parts, that a lot of the valuable, um, chemical reactions that occur in wetlands occur when they're saturated in, say, anaerobic or anaerobic conditions that lack oxygen. And that's where a lot of the nutrients are transformed. If they're drier, those periods won't be as long. And so that function ends up being negatively impacted.
You were describing the types of soil on the site, and there are three types of soil. And you mentioned there was a source, but I couldn't quite hear you. Could you define the source of the information about the soil composition on this site? What is the source for that information?
For the mapping and the information?
Yes.
U.S. Department of Agriculture Web Soil Survey and U.S. Department of Agriculture Official Soil Series Descriptions.
And the information you took, is that specific to this site?
The official soil descriptions just describe that soil series. Um, the web soil survey map or have a little more detail. They're specific to Essex County. Um, but not necessarily specific to the site.
But for the vicinity?
Correct.
Just in one moment, please. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we should just offer to mark the uh, slide presentation. I don't remember what number we're up to, and General A will tell me that I haven't given all the old exhibits yet anyway, so I have absolutely no idea what number we're up to.
We're on oh fourteen.
Thank you. So we would offer that as exhibit oh fourteen for the objectives. So that concludes my questions for now, unless anything prompts anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for the presentation. Could you go back to the map where we see how we'll drive? And as an expert, is this a unique piece of land that is not found anywhere else in the surrounding territory? Wait, which, which, the keep going. Sorry, uh, keep going.
That's the beginning.
It was a map that you had of the project within the
Oh.
That one. So is this a unique piece of land that is nowhere else to be found? Or are contiguous pieces of land similar to this? Is this a unique piece of land here with fragile pan, or are other areas contiguous to this similar?
In adjacent to this?
Correct.
No.
No, which?
The land adjacent to this property is all developed.
But initially, we're talking about, I'm asking, before it was developed, how will drive West Essex Highlands to the golf course? Was it similar? Could, could this be a unique piece of land that was not similar to all those other pieces of land, or in your expert opinion, is this, is the surrounding land similar to this land?
So if you're asking historically, was
Correct.
Like this ridge, were the soils on the ridge similar?
Correct.
My answer is probably yes.
Okay. Okay, that's a good answer. Uh, Mayor McCartney, if you have any questions about the testimony?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. So I tried to make sense of this with Mr. Gallagher and your testimony that yes, the buildings will in fact displace the water.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Uh, I'm just trying to read away that Mr. Gallagher's testimony is saying that yes, the project will displace the water. But it would seem to me that we need an overlay zone on what the stormwater management plan is on how is that water being redirected? And, and we don't, and I don't see that. So do you know, do you understand what I'm saying? That, yes, I understand it's being displaced. I understand it's being displaced. But I don't, maybe it was the beginning of the year that we heard about stormwater, stormwater management plan.
I think I could help by following up with a question, if that's
Mr. Affron.
Um, could you please go back to the map with the arrows?
Which one?
I'm sorry, the map with the arrows, blue and violet arrow. Okay, now, is possible to zoom in a little bit on that? Thank you. Now, on this map, you're showing the pink arrows demonstrating water going to certain defined places, correct?
Correct.
Now, it looks like a conduit or pipe kind of in a semicircle. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, then there are the detention basins built in, say, on the bottom, what you pointed to earlier, and there's several. This is part of the stormwater management plan, isn't it?
It is, yes.
So these features that are marked here where the arrows go to are reflective of the stormwater management plan. Is that fair to say?
It is, yes.
So Mayor, I think that in a sense, there's an overlay through this because he's showing that the water movement after the stormwater management plan is in place, changes the natural flow. And the pink arrows reflect it going into the management system. So I'm not sure if that's what you were driving at, but I think it does give an overlay to a great degree.
I just want to add for clarity, was that the stormwater management plan that was, uh, sent to the DEP for their evaluation, is that?
That would be the same stormwater management plan, sure.
So this represents what was sent to the DEP for their evaluation?
Except for one thing.
Except one thing.
Now, Mr. Gallagher, when DEP Doug reviews a stormwater management plan, what is their focus of review?
They're supposed to look at compliance with NJAC seven colon eight.
Now, what's the point of their analysis? Are they looking at wetlands, water quality, drinking water quality? What are they looking at?
One, compliance, and two, water quality.
Okay, so when you say water quality, they're referring to the quality of the water after recharge. Is that correct?
Or after treatment through any of the BMP, be it recharge or for quantity manager or peak flow management.
Okay, so in this particular site, we're going to see water going, stormwater going into, say, the detention basin on the lower left-hand corner, as one example. The water will then infiltrate eventually out of there. And it will go into the very far corner where the arrow points to at the bottom of that stream. Now, the recharge analysis by the state is directed to the efficiency of that aspect of the management system. Is that correct?
In theory, yes.
Yes. I'm not saying whether they're right or wrong.
I'm sorry, Mr. Affron, one second.
I'm just going to object. These, these seem like questions that would be directed towards an engineer who's stormwater design. I just want to state my objection for the record.
Okay, Mr. Block, Mr. Affron.
Now, so they're looking at the effect of the stormwater management system on returning water back to the drinking water system through the streams and rivers. Is that correct?
Can you repeat that?
No. They're, they're looking, they're looking at the, well, I think I asked a question.
Mr. Affron, ask him a question. Don't tell him what, please, you gotta ask him a question. Thank you. I'm getting better at this.
Looking at the return of the water back into the river system. Is the DEP analysis going to the quality of wetlands post-construction?
No.
Okay. And therefore, there's a, this, Mr. Chairman, therefore, our position is that even if the DEP did the analysis on recharge, that's not an analysis of wetlands post-construction. And so that relates to environmental analysis.
This is what you're, you're hypothesizing what the DEP did or didn't do.
I'm not. I'm not hypothesizing. The expert who does permitting said so.
It is, is it your, did you read the DEP's, uh, evaluation of the site?
We do not.
That's the end. He said, we do not.
But you said, did you read?
I said, I said, did you read the, well, the only way he's going to know what the DEP did is to read the DEP's evaluation of the site. Correct? So you said he did. He said he didn't.
No, I didn't say he did. I said he's an expert in what DEP does in terms of recharge.
So my question was, did you read what the DEP said about this particular site?
Their permit, pretty brief. Their permit, pretty brief. It doesn't describe their analysis, just their conclusions. And, and I'm not sure this board knows, but we did send a letter to D E P requesting that the permit be suspended based on inaccurate information. And much like I said, that we have seasonal high water table below the wetland elevations, just elements like that that don't make sense. So we made the request for D E P to relook at this application.
Did they?
They just got the letter a couple of weeks ago. So
There's no activity yet. I think the applicant responded and there's no activity yet.
For the record, I believe, and Mr. Affron can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that letter was sent after the filing of a notice of appeal in the appellate division of all the permits. So why would the D E P and Ms. McGovern correct me if I'm wrong? The D E P shouldn't even have jurisdiction over these permits right now.
Yeah, that's, that was, that was my understanding is that you made the request to the D E P. They denied it. And now there's an appeal in front of the appellate division. So now it's under their jurisdiction.
Not necessarily.
Okay, but let's go back to the, let's go back to the original question. You stated that you, you're not sure what the D E P did in their analysis. You, they only came up with a conclusion.
Well, he
Correct. I'm asking him.
Yes, the permit describes their conclusions.
Okay, so there may have been extensive, their, their analysis may be in the, done by the normal process that they do in an analysis of a site. Is that correct?
We don't know if they use the normal process.
So is it, in your expert opinion, does the D E P in areas not used in a normal process? They use something that is more or less?
Well, I can answer your question this way. We were surprised at the things D E P missed in the stormwater management plan that affects how the basins will function.
So the, the answer to the question is, nobody here is a hundred percent sure what the criteria were the D E P used in the analysis, but only their conclusions.
But Mr. Chairman, hold on a second. The criteria don't change each application. He's an expert in permitting in this field. And he's testifying that the criteria used, the analysis used focuses on water quality subsequent to recharge. That's the standard D E P uses, and he testified to that.
Right.
The criteria don't change each application.
That's what I'm getting to.
Expert in that and says, when D E P does the stormwater analysis, they're looking at recharge in terms of water quality following the return of the waters of the system. They, and he said specifically, they do not look at wetlands health following construction. And so the criteria don't change each time you do this. He's saying, D E P's analysis does not go to these environmental points. That doesn't change each time. And the other, let me ask a follow-up question if I can. In reading D E P's stormwater approval, as you described it, do you see any reference in there to commenting on wetlands' conditions post-construction?
No.
So the D E P did not comment on it, and their decision administratively that is read is where they put their findings. There aren't a separate set of findings somewhere else that they don't share with us. So we know two things. One, an expert who works on permitting in this area says they focus on water quality following recharge. And when, in reading the E P's stormwater analysis, they don't address wetlands health at all. So we have two, two things flow from this. One, this is not what they focus on in normally and in the terms of the criteria. And two, they did not address this in their findings. So in answer to the Chair's question, it deep he made a decision, but it doesn't go to these environmental issues dealing with wetlands, conditions and health. That's our point, that this is not something that is superseded by D E P. This is an environmental question. And to the extent environmental questions are relevant here, and we say they are for reasons we had in our colloquy, this testimony is relevant.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes, I definitely have a question on, have you identified any non-compliance with the freshwater wetlands rules specifically towards drainage areas, towards portions of a sloped wetland area?
Remember, the freshwater wetlands permits on this site were really road crossings.
I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. I will repeat myself. I know, I know. The wetland permits on this site were road crossings. So that was interpreted to be compliant with the Freshwater Wetlands Act.
Yeah, so the freshwater wetland rules do not regulate the flow of surface runoff to specific sections of a sloped wetland area.
No.
And so I guess just a follow-up question. Would a recommendation for the applicant be simply adding additional stormwater discharges upstream to ensure the ecological impacts are avoided?
I think the bigger issue here is to relook at the soils to determine where seasonal high water table is.
That's all I had for now.
Okay, thank you. Mayor McCartney?
Well, Chairman, I just wanted to go back. I'm now looking through my notes. This was listening to Mr. Sean Walsh's testimony back in February, it looks like. That was the question that I asked was, the question I asked was asking Mr. Walsh, are you recommending additional basins to be added, either deeper or wider? And that's what I, that's what I meant about having an overlay, that it wasn't just this basin. It's a whole stormwater management plan. Okay, I meant the whole plan, not just that one basin.
My general view on a site like this, on a basalt or diabase ridges, is that these are difficult sites to develop. They tend to have high water tables.
Right.
So even making a basin bigger isn't necessarily going to solve the problem. And I know Sean pointed out some other issues that, if I remember right, identified some problems with their calculations that they underestimated the volume of water. So all those issues together make this a complicated site to design. And again, the key issue here, and Sean Walsh brought this up as well, is that getting the soil testing and descriptions done accurately. And that's why I pointed out, it makes no sense that the seasonal high water table can be below the elevation of the wetland. It has to be higher. There's no mention of a fragile pan in any of the soil borings. And in every soil series, it describes a fragile pan. And that, having those soils have a fragile pan actually makes sense with the hydrology of the wetlands. It follows the surface groundwater flow path flowed towards the wetland and the stream. To have soil estimated seasonal high water table below the wetland to me indicates they missed that confining layer. And New Jersey D M, D E P's B M P manual requires that you identify those restrictive horizons in your soil testing.
So Chairman, I, again, going back to my notes here, that was one of the points. I actually have a condition here that more test pits. We were going to make a condition for more test pits and and to recalculate.
So I've got another question. Based on what you just said, so if the D E P requires it, and it wasn't provided, wouldn't they ask for it before they made a conclusion?
Soil descriptions were provided for the basins. What I showed the board tonight is how they fit in with the rest of the landscape of the site. D E P is going to tend to believe an applicant that those borings are correct. But in this case, just looking at that flow path from an upland to a wetland, it seems that those test pit investigations, they just don't make sense relative to where the wetlands are on this site. There should be a gradient from the top of the ridge towards the wetland that groundwater and surface water are both flowing towards them. And that fragile pan is a key element for anyone doing a test pit to identify.
Okay. Right, Chairman Garino, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Gallagher, thank you for your presentation. I just want to get a clarification. I know you had mentioned towards the end, talking about chemical reactions. Would those chemical reactions have any impact on water flow percolation or would result in any environmental, you know, impact?
No, they're usually, why wetlands, at least in part, are protected is that they're important in transforming nutrients that could be a problem in our receiving bodies, like streams and bays. And nitrogen is a big one. And it can convert it from, and a form that would become nitrogen gas. So those anaerobic conditions are valuable. So a healthy functioning wetland is important for just reducing the amount of nutrients that go downstream.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Captain Garino, do you have any questions?
Uh, not, it's not true.
Mr. Alper, do you have any questions?
I do. Thank you. Um, couple of things. First, I want to make sure I have your phrasing right. I think you said the seasonal high water table is below the wetlands elevation?
For those two basins that I used as example.
Right. And you also said the basin bottoms are lower than the wetland elevations.
Correct.
So when you were first saying that, I, I was maybe misunderstanding. I thought you were saying, I thought you were basically saying that that was a design problem, that they were designing the basin bottom to be lower. But from the more recent things you've said, I think maybe I've misunderstood. And maybe you're saying that it's a, it's a math issue and they've miscalculated where the water is. Is that, am I understanding that right?
I think you're right on both accounts. Let me go to one. This, for example, what I was saying is this basin, one interrupts that groundwater flow path towards the wetland. And then it's at five thirty-two and the wetlands at five forty. So you've changed that gradient from groundwater moving towards the wetland to now groundwater or water in the wetland moving towards the basin. But not only is that an impact for the wetlands, but it's going to compromise the design of the basin because it's water that was never anticipated in the design.
It's already going to be there. Okay, um, and then if you can go back to the arrow page with the blue and the pink arrows and zoom out, yeah, that's good. Um, so if I've understood you correctly, you're saying that the impact here of the pink arrows is that there's going to be less water to the northern part of the wetlands. They're going to dry out?
To an extent, yes. There's just less water getting to them.
Is that what, what, what you might call the destruction of wetlands or is it not to that extent or is that?
It's, it's definitely an impact.
So D E P doesn't have the jurisdiction on that or they do, but they didn't look at it or they looked at it and decided?
They don't. Their footprint of jurisdiction is the wetland and the wetland transition area.
So it does have the jurisdiction of whether or not portions of the wetlands are being destroyed.
Normally, well, D E P doesn't. Many times townships, even though they can't supersede ordinances, but they could have stream buffers or stream impact requirements, and that would feed into that. So it's often part of a municipal E I S, which I understand has been waived for this application.
Hmm. Um, has, are these your arrows or were these?
They are.
Has D E P seen these arrows?
They have now.
Okay. So this is in the letter that was sent that there's not a response on yet. It's maybe in the appellate division. Gotcha. Um, so I guess my remaining question is for Ms. McGovern, and it's, do we have some power here if D E P is not weighing in on specific aspects as opposed to if the E P, if, if, if you say X and D E P says, no, X is fine. I, I assume maybe we don't have jurisdiction. But if you say X and D E P never responds on X, does the planning board have some jurisdiction there?
I think under N J S A thirteen colon nine B dash thirty, it's pretty clear that the D E P has the exclusive rights for regulation, number one. Number two, and what this board has to review is if this application complies with its ordinance, with the town's ordinance. And the town ordinance specifically states under general provisions, which is section C five, the development of the tract shall be exempt from all bulk design and environmental regulations of West Orange Land Use Regulation ordinances unless otherwise indicated herein. And there are no other environmental regulations set forth in this ordinance. So if the board finds that they've complied with the ordinance as applies to this zoning district, that's what the board is supposed to be looking at. If the board disagrees with the D E P, the board has no power to disagree with the D E P. The, a higher level, the appellate division, has to make that decision.
Even if it appears to be that the D E P maybe didn't look at the specific issue?
We don't, we, there was a big submission, so we didn't look at that. I don't know whether the witness, did you look at everything that was submitted to the D E P by the applicant? Because it is on file here.
Yes, well, I'm not sure we looked at every page, but we looked at a lot of it.
And I would also defer to our expert. Perhaps if something was egregious or something really like a real, I don't know whether these are minor inconsistencies or this is something totally unusual. I, is it?
So development of any site with related regarding freshwater wetlands, any impacts of that development are regulated by N J D E P. So if N J D E P does not have it in N J A C seven seven A, it is not a regulation that, as a board, we could point back to. It's not in our code. It's not in N J A C seven seven A, the freshwater wetlands protection rules. There is nothing that I have identified that has, shows any non-compliance with those freshwater wetland rules based on my review of them. Typically, as a board, it's always a condition of any potential approval that you need to obtain your outside agency approvals. One of them in this case, as a board engineer, we identify those required approvals. And then it's up to the applicant to obtain them and provide them for us to review and verify that it is consistent with what we're reviewing. The revision that was approved, we have also reviewed and approved or commented on. So generally speaking, I understand maybe some of the points about the reduction in volumes, the northern portion of the freshwater wetland rule, freshwater wetlands. But for the board, this, in my opinion, is not something that we can comment on. It would just be a condition of a potential approval that they would, the applicant would have to obtain the necessary L O Y as well as any development permits, general permits related to freshwater wetlands.
Pete, you can't hear.
It was much simpler than I thought. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I think this, at this stage, we disagree certainly to one extent, regardless of everything that's been said, namely that the applicant itself agreed to submit to an environmental appraisal in the settlement agreement. In addition, the applicant agreed to go through site plan review. In fact, it's since the ordinance removes most constraints, it could have been a courtesy review. But the applicant agreed to submit in the settlement agreement to site plan review for this project. And in that same agreement, it agreed to submit to an environmental appraisal. So even though there may be a question whether or not there are any D E P regulations that are violated directly by this structure. Nevertheless, the applicant agreed, in exchange for being relieved of all environmental constraints otherwise, to submit to an environmental appraisal. And that means that the board must still take into account environmental harm from the project.
And that means that the board must still take into account environmental harm from the project. So our position is still that, and we don't need to reach this issue yet. You've heard the evidence. Obviously, this comes to the time of a decision whether this enters into the board's decision or not. But our position is still that since the applicant submitted to an environmental appraisal and it did not have to in the settlement agreement as a part of this site plan application, that regardless of what DEP rules particularly say, if this project is going to cause environmental harm in the form of wetlands injury or otherwise, as you've heard from other witnesses, it's still within the board's jurisdiction. That the applicant is not freed of its own contractual commitment to submit to an environmental appraisal for this project. Doesn't matter what DEP says, contractually, the applicant agreed this board must consider environmental injuries. That's why Mr. DeFeo was appointed, for example, because of that contractual agreement the applicant made. This board nor can DEP eliminate that. If it contracted for that as the price of getting this rather generous zoning ordinance, then it has to live with it and is within the board's jurisdiction.
Mr. Blocker?
Yeah, I, I take issue. First of all, we're using all types of terms. There's nothing in the settlement agreement about an environmental appraisal. There is nothing about environmental injuries. All it says is that Mr. DeFeo will review. That is part and parcel of the settlement agreement. And it's funny that Mr. Afrin, when he first came here back in July, didn't want to acknowledge the settlement agreement at all. Now, all of a sudden, he acknowledges the settlement agreement. And what that settlement agreement says is, as Ms. McGovern pointed out, we're governed by the IH zoning ordinance. It exempts us from all other land use provisions unless they're specifically stated in the IH zone. One of the exemptions is the EIS. So as Mr. Afrin, I don't know if he's a contract lawyer, but you read contracts as a whole. I believe the contract is clear and when read as a whole, there was never an intent by the township of West Orange or my client to have to provide or have this board consider any items outside of the IH1 zone. We can go back and forth and I respect Mr. Afrin speaking, but this is clearly a legal issue and I'm sure there'll be another farm, another time, another place. But the settlement agreement is clear, the intent of the parties is clear.
One thing I would say is that I never said the settlement agreement does not affect this case. All I said early on, and that's about a year ago. All I said early on was that the settlement agreement cannot bind this board to approving this application. I simply said, just because it was a settlement with the town and we he, does not mean this board loses its authority. That's what I said when I met, that's what I said when I spoke of the settlement agreement. In fact, Mr. Blocker, several times you told me, Mr. Afrin, we're not talking about the settlement agreement, doesn't apply here. I was the one urging its applicability. I was simply saying it doesn't free the board of its duty. I was saying it doesn't bind this court.
The board understands we are not free of our duty.
Now, as far as the, the, the actual sentence is, in addition, we he shall submit all plans to DeFeo associates the town's environmental consultant for review and comment. And he did comment and this evidence is all in response to his comment or lack thereof. So the agreement itself makes all of this relevant. And it does say environmental consultant. Doesn't just say for review in the abstract, it says for review by the township's environmental consultant.
All right, that's, that was it for my questions.
Well, good. Mr. Cardozo?
No questions.
Talking for, by way of colloquy.
No questions. Thank you. Mr. Hazel?
Uh, trying to ask this question a little differently. In, in, uh, in your experience, have you ever come across a situation where there has been any sort of a, an error, if you will, uh, made in any of these DEP findings that has been, has, have you ever come across a situation where that has occurred and how was it dealt with?
Yes, and we just, uh, did a review of a project in Mercer County that the state ended up overturning or suspending their permit. Same process.
To the state, when you say the state, what portion?
Meaning New Jersey DEP and this specifically was a flood hazard area control act issue that.
So the DEP looked at it, an application again and came up with a different decision?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's within the body of the DEP?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. McNeil, any other questions?
Uh, kind of going back to my last question. Do you have any recommendations for this development to lessen the impacts to the northern portions of the wetlands areas from an ecological perspective?
And again, I would say that right now, it's all based on a better understanding of the soils. And in the absence of that, it makes it difficult to make recommendations. Because if the soils are what the soil survey says they are, your seasonal high water table is high. It's going to be a major, um, constraint on how you manage stormwater on the site. So in an ideal world, there's, to me, there's often ways that you can do things better. Um, but you still need a fundamental understanding of what the constraints are before you can kind of take that journey.
So is it a volume, like the volume has to match in the existing, to propose condition for the well-in impacts to be minimal? Essentially, like runoff volume has to match the existing condition for there to be no ecological impact to the wetland area?
And look, you know, we know that is never possible, you know, especially in a headwater site like this. They're very sensitive to change. Uh, it doesn't take a lot of change to modify, you know, surface and groundwater flow paths. Um, a little bit of excess volume, you're going to have these streams erode. So there will be impacts, but really if your question's focused on stormwater management, it, again, it's really understanding the constraints that the site has relative to how you manage stormwater. That's the first step and that's the step we think they missed. Because that fragile pan is typical in all these sites. And for some of the borings that find seasonal high at eight, 10 feet, it, it just defies logic, at least as far as we're concerned.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a five minute break and then we'll come to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry, hang on a second, Mr. Blocker.
Okay, thank you. I just have a few questions for Mr. Gallagher.
All right.
First, I'd like to reiterate my objection that if the objector and Mr. Gallagher take any issue with what the DEP didn't do, any methodology or procedure that they disagree with, that is currently at the appellate division of the Superior Court in New Jersey. It is not within the purview of this board, the jurisdiction of this board.
So noted.
That being said, I, I have a few questions. Um, are you aware that the site currently has an LOI?
I am.
Have you reviewed the LOI?
I've reviewed the LOI, I didn't see the submitted documentation.
Okay, can you testify today that you take any issue with the delineation as set forth in the LOI, which was issued this past November?
That was an extension that was issued the past November.
Correct.
And I do not take issue.
And what is the process or procedure when the DEP, uh, i- issues a wetlands LOI or in this case, an extension? Do they, do they inspect the wetland delineations?
They probably did it the first time. I'm not sure if they did or didn't do it the second time for the extension.
So e- even the first time, um, do, do they inspect soils?
They do.
Do they inspect hydrology?
Yes.
Do they inspect vegetation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further.
Thank you. We'll take a five minute break. Thanks.
Ladies and gentlemen, you are on.
I want to thank the Academy. I'm sorry. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen on Zoom. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen in the audience. Mr. Effron, do you have questions?
I don't need more questions, but just a clarification. Ms. McGovern asked earlier, this goes back three or four colloquies, about whether or not the matter on appeal means that reconsideration, so to speak, that's presently under the DEP is no longer jurisdictionally possible. I just wanted to clarify that the application with DEP is an application to suspend the permit. And that's a separate administrative proceeding from the challenge to its approval. So although there's a relationship, obviously, one is not barred by the other. This suspension is always a separate administrative application.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify that.
And nothing has been adjudicated yet?
Correct.
Okay, good.
I just have a couple of more questions for Mr. Gallagher.
Go right ahead.
Sorry. I just want to know, were you or anyone at your firm aware that my client's DEP applications were open for about 20 months?
Yes.
Okay, and during that time period, did you or anyone in your firm have a chance to submit any comments or objections to any of my clients' submissions?
We were not retained at that point. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Let me rephrase my question. At any time during the 20-month period which the applications remained open, did your firm comment or submit any comments or objections to the DEP during that time period about the applications?
We did not.
Your firm never sent in any applications or none that you're aware of?
I believe all our comments were directed to the town at that point.
Okay, do you know for sure?
No, I wasn't involved at that point.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. And at the end, as you're understanding, all permits were granted and the LOI was extended, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure when the 20-month-
Mr. Effron.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure when the 20-month period began and ended that Mr. Pluck refers to, but what it means. So to the extent, I think the witness says he doesn't know anyway, so, but I just don't think there's a clear time period offered. I have no further questions of the witness.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask members of the public to come up, one at a time, and ask Mr. Gallagher questions based on his testimony. So we're going to hone it in on his testimony. A question is asked, just like the members of the board did, if, when, why, what, where, how, how does this apply? And if you start testifying, I'm going to ask you politely to stop testifying. We're going to focus in on the question. So please come up, state your name for the record clearly into the microphone, and go right ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Richard Mayer. I live in the Grand in West Orange. Based off of what you, the information you just gave us, I live in a community that's right below where this would be built in anticipation of, say, heavy rains. Would that being built there, would that affect my community in terms of flooding? Could that possibly affect my community?
I'm just going to object to the question. I don't think that Mr. Gallagher covered that in his testimony. He covered the conditions regarding onsite wetlands.
Could the water affect my community?
If you can't answer, you can't.
Well, I would just say this, he did speak to flooding in terms of building on Mr. Walsh's testimony when he spoke about the water table being different from how the applicant measured it. He didn't speak of flooding directly, but he talked about the problems because of the question of the water table.
But he didn't speak to flooding directly on the contiguous properties?
Based off of what you, I'll try and rephrase. Based off of what you've told us today, what would be the effects of heavy rains in my neighborhood?
Same objection.
He didn't look at your neighborhood, sir?
In the adjacent neighborhoods to this, where this is being built?
Same objection.
Did you talk about runoff?
So are you in the neighborhood right down here?
Yes.
So my firm's concern about this whole project is their stormwater management plan is flawed based on what we still believe as being inaccurate soils information. With that said, it's going to, understanding where the seasonal high water table is accurately, is important to make sure all the stormwater BMPs proposed function in accordance with New Jersey BMP manual. If they're incorrect with any aspect of the existing features and soils on site, it's going to impact how they function. And then, yes, you will have an increase in water going down the hill towards your development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Jessica Pearson Verona. Okay, you just, and a couple of times before, you had testified that the seasonal high water table is higher than the bottom or the base of the pits. Okay, that being said, so obviously, what are the ramifications of a retention basin that cannot retain the water?
I know, you could write a diaphragm. That's a compliance problem. And the New Jersey BMP manual has very strict guidelines on how to design a basin and what the constraints are. And normally, you need two feet of separation between the bottom of basin and seasonal high water table. If the seasonal high water table is actually found to be above the elevation of the basin, that's an inherent problem with the design.
So going a little further on that, you had mentioned something about water quality, NJAC 7:8. You talked about it not being in compliance with water quality standards and infiltration standards, recharge. And this is a wholly natural property, so recharge would apply on this particular site. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the recharge standard can't actually occur if the water level is higher than, the water has nowhere to go. It's not going to re-infiltrate into the ground. So they would not be in compliance with the recharge standard. And the water quality standard would also necessitate some kind of infiltration or flow through some kind of grasses or some kind of vegetation. But how would that actually be conducted if they, none of these pits are working?
And again, that goes back to our fundamental concern with the design. And what I tried to show with seasonal high water table and the fragile pan as it relates to wetlands is that the environment of this site should make sense, that water is not moving uphill to get to the wetland. Their seasonal high water table elevations being below the wetland just make no sense. Every other wetland and every other landscape in New Jersey, unless it's an Artesian situation, the water moves downhill towards the lowest landscape position. And if it's wet enough, it's a wetland and a stream. And that's what we believe occurs here. So any indication that a seasonal high water table is below the elevation of an adjacent well and
Gentlemen, you are on.
I want to thank the Academy. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen on Zoom. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen in the audience. Mr. Efrain, do you have questions or we're going to go?
I don't need more questions, but just a clarification. Ms. McGovern asked earlier, this goes back three or four colloquies, about whether or not the matter on appeal means that reconsideration, so to speak, that's presently under the DEP is no longer jurisdictionally possible. I just wanted to clarify that the application with DEP is an application to suspend the permit. And that's a separate administrative proceeding from the challenge to its approval. So although there's a relationship, obviously, one is not barred by the other. This is a suspension is always a separate administrative application.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify that.
And nothing has been adjudicated yet?
Correct.
Okay, good.
I just have a couple of more questions for Mr. Gallagher.
Go right ahead. Sorry.
I just want to know, were you or anyone at your firm aware that my client's DEP applications were open for about 20 months?
Yes.
Okay, and during that time period, did you or anyone in your firm have a chance to submit any comments or objections to any of my client submissions?
We were not retained at that point. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My question, let me rephrase my question. At any time during the 20-month period which the applications remained open, did your firm comment, submit any comments or objections to the DEP during that time period about the applications?
We did not.
Your firm never sent in any applications or that, none that you're aware of?
I believe all our comments were directed to the town at that point.
Okay. Do you know for sure?
No, I wasn't involved at that point.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. And at the end, as you're understanding, all permits were granted and the LOI was extended, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure when the 20-
Mr. Efrain.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure when the 20-month period began and ended that Mr. Plucker refers to, but what it means. So to the extent, I think the witness says he doesn't know anyway, so, but I just don't think there's a clear time period offered. I have no further questions of the witness.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask members of the public to come up, one at a time, and ask Mr. Gallagher questions based on his testimony. So we're going to hone it in on his testimony. A question is asked, just like the members of the board did, if, when, why, what, where, how, how does this apply? And if you start testifying, I'm going to ask you politely, you stop testifying, we're going to focus in on the question. So please come up, state your name for the record clearly into the microphone, and go right ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Richard Mayer. I live in the Grand in West Orange. Based off of what you, the information you just gave us, I live in a community that's right below where this would be built in anticipation of, say, heavy rains. Would that being built there, would that affect my community in terms of flooding? Could that possibly affect my community?
I'm just going to object to the question. I don't think that Mr. Gallagher covered that in his testimony. He covered the conditions regarding onsite wetlands.
Could the water affect my community?
If you can't answer, you can't.
Well, I would just say this, he did speak to flooding in terms of building on Mr. Walsh's testimony when he spoke about the water table being different from how the applicant made it. He didn't speak of flooding directly, but he talked about the problems because they questioned the water table.
But he didn't speak to flooding directly on the contiguous properties, so.
Based off of what you, I'll try and rephrase. Based off of what you've told us today, what would be the effects of heavy rains in my neighborhood?
Same objection.
He didn't look at your neighborhood, sir.
In the adjacent neighborhoods to this, where this is being built?
Same objection.
Did you talk about runoff?
So are you in the neighborhood right down here?
Yes.
So my firm's concern about this whole project is their stormwater management plan is flawed based on what we still believe as being inaccurate soils information. With that said, it's going to, understanding where the seasonal high water table is accurately, is important to make sure all the stormwater BMPs proposed function in accordance with New Jersey BMP manual. If they're incorrect with any aspect of the existing features and soils on site, it's going to impact how they function. And then, yes, you will have an increase in water going down the hill towards your development.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, please.
Jessica Pearson Verona. Okay, you just, and a couple of times before you had testified that the seasonal high water table is higher than the bottom or the base of the pits. Okay, that being said, so obviously, what are the ramifications of a retention basin that cannot retain the water? I know, you could write a diaphragm.
Compliance problem, and the New Jersey BMP manual has very strict guidelines on how to design a basin and what the constraints are. And normally you need two feet of separation between the bottom of basin and seasonal high water table. If the seasonal high water table is actually found to be above the elevation of the basin, that's an inherent problem with the design.
So going a little further on that, you had mentioned something about water quality, NJAC 7:8. You talked about it not being in compliance with water quality standards and infiltration standards, recharge. And this is a wholly natural property, so recharge would apply on this particular site. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the recharge standard can't actually occur if the water level is higher than, the water has nowhere to go. It's not going to re-infiltrate into the ground. So they would not be in compliance with the recharge standard. And the water quality standard would also necessitate some kind of infiltration or flow through some kind of grasses or some kind of vegetation. But how would that actually be conducted if they, none of these pits are working?
And again, that goes back to our fundamental concern with the design. And what I tried to show with seasonal high water table and the Fragipan as it relates to wetlands is that the environment of this site should make sense. That water is not moving uphill to get to the wetland. Their seasonal high water table elevations being below the wetland just make no sense. Every other wetland and every other landscape in New Jersey, unless it's an artesian situation, the water moves downhill towards the lowest landscape position. And if it's wet enough, it's a wetland and a stream. And that's what we believe occurs here. So any indication that a seasonal high water table is below the elevation of an adjacent wellend is the basis for our position that it just makes no sense.
Speaking back, going back to the Fragipan, have you ever seen a situation in which the change of flow, the pattern of flow being changed with the arrow diagram that was up earlier? Could that change of flow have an impact on the top soils before you hit the Fragipan so as to erode them more quickly, whether that be to intense storms, the redirection, the removal of trees and upsetting the root systems so that the Fragipan actually now is closer to the surface than it was long before? And again, that would, would that or could that disrupt the infiltration process that, the natural recharge process that had once occurred on that site?
I don't know for sure. But one of the things I can describe is, we'll look at development patterns, something like this. So this is a pervious pavement site. And there's buildings and there's roads. So what could happen, and what often happens, is when you put a road in this position where water is moving towards the wetland, you could get mounding on one side.
Can you, can you just explain mounding?
So, I'm going to go back to this one. So this is a normal flow path. Water's moving down gradient from high to low elevations. If I put a structure here, this water would be blocked and it would tend to elevate and mount on the upgradient side because it has nowhere to go. So anytime there's changes in development or just land use patterns on a site, it changes hydrology. So if I built a road here, I could make the water table higher up gradient and there's kind of a shadow effect where it's lower down gradient. So those are all the effects that happen with any kind of development as it relates to groundwater flow paths. So this is a complicated site. So it's hard to really estimate or describe what could happen. But water is not disappearing. It's going somewhere.
Okay, it's going somewhere, so, but it's not going to, it's being drained away from your assessment of the site and gravity, et cetera. And the redirection of the stormwater patterns by the proposed stormwater management plan. That water is going away from the wetlands. Where is it going? It's going gravity, right? It's going down the hills? It's, to the general, that came up a few moments ago. It's going to flow the path of easiest resistance, which is down-
Testify. Ask him a question, let him testify, please.
It's-
Would it go down the hills?
I'm going to mess with this thing. In this case, this, the blue was existing surface flow patterns. And it's pretty much going to reflect what happens with the groundwater as well. So anytime there's any new structure, it's going to change that path. So in this case, even with the road, so even if this blue line, surface water is going to be collected by the stormwater system. Groundwater is going to be impacted because roads tend to be compacted to be stable, or there's infrastructure in the roads like storm sewer and sanitary sewer, which end up either intercepting or blocking that groundwater flow path. So pretty much all these areas in the development are going to modify how water moves towards the weather. And then cases like this, there is inherently increased volume of runoff on a development site. And that's all being discharged to a point, one single point. So it's going to impact that stream down gradient. And go back and look at the stream. It's pretty nice shape. It's a pretty healthy stream, typical of a natural area. There's not a lot of erosion. That, you know, the banks are low. Increased volume is going to cause that stream either to widen or to deepen.
So that elicits another question. If that stream begins to widen, and I'm not sure if that's on a hill or if that's in a, you know, a gully sort of area at the bottom of a hill, could that form a new wetlands area?
Could.
Okay, and so with that, if the development is not that far away from it, how would the riparian zone then apply to a newly formed wetlands on a site due to the redirection of water?
One, the riparian zone is off of the stream channel. So that begins at top of bank, which would be here or there.
But what if the stream widens?
It would shift at some point in the future where that riparian zone begins. Now, they have a permit now, so they're, that governs a riparian zone for now.
Okay, and it's only 50 feet right now?
That's what I believe, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public, please, I have a question for Mr. Gallagher, please come up, state your name.
Ershow. Excuse me? E R S H O W. I live on Palm Hill Lane in Roseland. And I have a question specifically related to the low water in Canoe Brook. Could you go back to the map with the blue arrows and the fuchsia, I guess? Is that dark gray, the Canoe Brook?
This? That gray?
Yes.
Yes, that's the headwaters of Canoe Brook.
That's the headwaters of the Canoe Brook.
Could we just note for the record, that's the stream to the far right of the drawing since we don't have any page numbers?
There are actually two-
Far left, keep doing it, sorry. Far left, far left, far left.
So this one I'm pointing to now is the Western Most Tributary, and there's an Eastern Tributary as well. And there are confluences south of the site.
Okay, so do, does all of this water currently work its way into the Canoe Brook or is it just on the left?
No, both. They're both tributaries, like headwater tributaries of Canoe Brook.
They're all tributaries towards the headwaters of the Canoe Brook. Okay, so after the, assuming that construction occurred and with this plan and with the basins, the way they are designed, the water would flow out ultimately back into the brook?
Yes.
Okay. So am I understanding it correctly that give or take 30% of the coverages, the natural coverage is removed from a rain of any ferocity and natural percolation and everything? And then it goes through the system, is absorbed into, and retained into a basin. And then it goes back into the natural, the Canoe Brook, okay? And then it makes its way down into the Canoe Brook, which runs for approximately, I don't know, whatever it is, you may know, but a half a dozen miles or whatever. It runs through, at least in Roseland where I am, it runs-
Sir, there's a question in there somewhere I'm just missing.
It floods, I'm concerned about the way a rush of water might, from a flooding perspective, since there's no ground percolation, is the, based on what you've testified today, when we get these heavy storms, which I'm no expert, but is it fair to say they've become more severe in general occasionally over the past 20 years?
Yes.
Okay. With, will the flooding, as it goes from a lack of natural percolation into any retention system, at least as you're seeing it, it's going to become worse?
And I'll answer your question again by saying that if the systems aren't designed to completely satisfy New Jersey BMP manual and New Jersey stormwater rules, then yes, it's going to change downstream flooding.
Yes, I'm just going to object to this testimony. I believe it was outside the scope of his testimony. I'll acknowledge that his colleague, Mr. Walsh from Princeton Hydro, testified as to these issues, but they weren't testified here tonight. They weren't a part of his testimony. And I would object to this line of questioning.
Well, I would just add though, in response-
Mr. Efrain.
That the question of the accuracy of the high water table leading to flooding because of the tension basins and can't support it is directly related to the subject matter. And if water is going to flood any part of the system because of inaccuracies, he did testify to those inaccuracies, and this naturally flows from his, no pun intended, from his testimony. Therefore, it's relevant for a member of the community-
And here's a, in his opinion.
Oh, of course.
Well, we should say that, in his opinion.
His opinion is relevant because of the predicate coming from the original examination.
Did you get the answer, sir? Thank you. Thank you. Did any of the members of the public have any questions, Mr. Gallagher? Please come up and be identified.
South of Hal Drive, West Orange, New Jersey. I think my, the question, and thank you for the education this evening and for sharing. You know, it's definitely a course for me tonight, so thank you. What I wanted to ask is, in layman's terms, the design of of the, I forget all the, all the vocabulary. The design of the stormwater system, we're saying, you testified tonight that it's not 100% correct or up to par as it should be. So in layman's term, if there is that 100-year storm that we've mentioned several times in different testimonies, what is the effects of this actual property? And what could be the effects of the properties around it?
To avoid- I'm sorry, Mr. Gallagher. Testify about this property and water collection on the property. You didn't testify about surrounding properties.
That's correct. But-
He testified about this property, so he can speak to the property.
Note though, that if it's going to be flooding, say, at the lower detention basin because of inaccuracies in the high water table calculation-
And that's fine.
That water has to go somewhere. It doesn't just stay in the basin. So if it's going to go offsite onto neighboring properties, that's really relevant to the general subject matter.
Focus on this property, what's going on in this property? Want to keep it on this property?
Okay, so let me rephrase that. So how would it affect this property? Not just the construction site, but the entire property that is owned by the builder? In terms of how would it affect the, everything on this, on this property? So we're focused in on the, on where the buildings are, but there's other acreage of lands where there's deer fence and other things. How would that be effective? How would that affect everything?
A lot of the areas proposed for deer fencing aren't going to change. It's the areas proximate to the development that will have the greatest impact as it relates to surface and groundwater flow patterns.
All right. What would, is there any other impact to this property, not focusing on the deer fencing, but in general?
But I can offer this though, because I have a feeling flooding questions are going to come up, that the applicant's flood hazard permit has a caveat on page one that says it doesn't obviate the town from having or getting an approval from the township floodplain manager. So the town, well, that permit really isn't quite 100% valid until the town blesses or is blessed by township.
I'm going to leave that to the board attorney. She read some things into the record. And we're going to leave the legal ease to the attorney. I would like you to testify on stormwater and hydro.
This is regulatory though, and I'll happy to read the clause to you in their permit. But DEP typically does this in their flood hazard permit to not overstep their role in dealing with local flooding issues and the township floodplain manager.
Chairman, I would add that this site in DEP's evaluation, it's not in a flood hazard area. The streams are regulated with regulated riparian zones, but it is not within a flood hazard area.
But again, any floodplain manager's responsibility is to look at health, safety, and welfare of the community, not just the development.
I'm going to object. I believe it's mischaracterizing the town's own ordinance, which my understanding follows the DEP regulations word for word. I am not an expert and I'm not holding myself out to be an expert in the area. But my understanding, and I'll defer to your esteemed engineer, that the area, there has to be a drainage area, 50 acres or more, and that this doesn't come close, and this was evaluated by the DEP during the 20 months that the application pended. We shouldn't get bogged down in legalese or whether an ordinance applies, but I would leave that to the professionals that know those regulations.
To add that, the floodplain administrator of the township will only review development within flood hazard areas. So this application is not within a flood hazard areas as defined by NJDEP. So will not be reviewed as a, as a purview of the floodplain administrator of the township.
So it's not relevant to this then? I mean, if our engineer just-
I know, and I read the floodplain management ordinance for your town, and it's far broader in its scope than just DEP.
At this time-
I'd like to just say though, if I could, I'm sorry, it really is a legal issue with it.
Yes, and that's what I was going to say.
I haven't researched everything that's been said here, neither has Mr. Plucker probably at the moment. So from my point of view, I think, we've heard the witness's answer, we've heard the expert give a viewpoint. I think we may have to develop this further through legal arguments.
Not this evening.
No, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do any of the members, do you have anything else to say? Okay.
No, and I didn't mean to interrupt.
Do any of the members, I'm sorry, do any of the members of the public have any questions from Mr. Gallagher on his testimony? Please come up and state your name for the record, please.
So Debbie Butensky, West Orange. I have a question though, based on what you just said with floodplain. If there was not a floodplain, but development created a floodplain, does that happen?
It could create a nuisance flooding issue. That's possible. Doesn't mean, and this is part of the issue, it doesn't mean it's within a 100-year floodplain as modeled by FEMA or New Jersey DEP, but it, there could be nuisance flooding issues that are either created or exacerbated by any developer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any, come right up and state your name for the record.
I was here in the fall and submitted pictures of the area to the rear of the street that I reside on. It's Fowler Drive. Have you had an opportunity to see those pictures of an emerging wetland in that area?
Excuse me, could you put your name on the record?
Excuse me?
Could you put your name on the record?
Oh, yes, my name is on the record, Susan. But it's not my name, it's my husband's.
You're sure?
I submitted pictures. I came in and talked to the planner here. I also had an opportunity to look at your myriad heavy. Plans that no one in the office was able to assist me in opening up and looking at. My concern is that you haven't had the opportunity to see that emerging wetland. And. I could not take pictures of that wetland before this meeting.
Ask him a question, please. You're stating, you're you're testifying.
Well, if. If he hasn't seen that, then he can't, he can't answer a question. Please, give me a little bit of leeway, huh? Okay? I'm just a plain citizen.
Me too.
The wetland is growing. You're an official. The wetland is larger now. The the grass is growing and and greater and spreading. And the deciduous trees are dead.
Okay, ma'am, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you one more. The people in the audience have questions. You're taking their time, not mine. I'm asking you to ask a question of him that he can answer.
The question, I'm giving.
You're stating, you're testifying, I'm going to, I don't want to argue with you. You're testifying. Please ask a question. I know you know what to do.
Do you live anywhere on that? Sheet?
I can't even make it clear exactly where Fowler Drive is on that. And I had a hard time being able to open up all of the maps. And look at them when I came into the planning office and it was not very, they were not very cooperative, not that they could be, I guess, they know nothing. They looked like they had never been opened before. But I can't tell from this where Fowler Drive is. I'm trying to draw draw attention to that. As the person who's looking at the drainage and and planning for the safety of all of the surrounding communities, so. I'm just openly asking you, we should be searching for. Solutions and possible problems. That's what we should be doing here. Not trying to stifle someone who who doesn't have enough information to ask the question. But are you familiar with that area?
And to the extent that it's asking about an offsite potential condition, I would renew my objection from earlier.
Well, I I'll point something out that is of interest. You can see how this wetland comes down, hits the property line right here.
Yes.
That's a large wetland area that ends at the property line. What you'll see here is there's a stream. Kind of runs underneath this road and up this way. But this wetland. They tend never to end.
Could you just show me where, I'm sorry, show me with that little light where. Fowler Drive is, I believe it's that orange area on the right. I believe, I could be wrong.
Tell her that's the proposed area and Fowler Drive would be on the bottom.
But in here.
Yeah.
All I'm pointing out is if you have what you believe is a wetland that's forming. It probably has to do that historically, this wetland probably extended into that development area. And what I understand, this is an older development that predated. The Fresh Water Wetlands Protection Act. So. It's very possible that some of the homes and some of this area are on what was historically wet.
Predated the Wetlands Act, I doubt it. The Wetlands Act in my, to my recollection, was way before these were built.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight? That's. Before. The Highlands was built nineteen eighty-eight. They were built in the nineties.
I don't know the approval history, but all I could say is that.
I believe that the Wetlands Act was in effect at the time. The, it was not a wetland sixteen years ago when I moved in there. The trees were all deciduous. And already Mother Nature is taking her action, which.
Ma'am, may, would you please ask a question?
The question is, will you be responsible? Do do you care to look into that in effect? I have a question. Well, if I ask the builder, will the builder be willing to look into this?
Ma'am. Do you have a question about Mr. Gallagher's testimony?
Do you think you should be concerned about what might happen there because, you know, the best laid plans? Of men and other men. Usually go astray.
And look, the applicant's attorney made it clear that we're looking at the site. But site impacts can go offsite. So do I think that they should be looking at offsite? Yes.
Could you tell them that they should take a look at this because there'll be possibilities?
I I think he heard.
Okay.
And I'll say for the record, the DEP does consider that when issuing stormwater permits. They look at the, to see if there's any net. Positive runoff, because the point is the stormwater system is designed, and again, I'm not an engineer, to have a net negative runoff. Meaning that the runoff will be less after the development than it is in current conditions. The DEP approved that design.
Thank you, Mr. Plucker. Mr. Ephron, say something.
Of course, sense is a legal question.
Yes.
That we'll have to address at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Muldoon. Any of the members of the public have any questions? Please, Mr. Gallagher, please come up and be identified.
Peter Guarino, I live twelve by Baskin Road, what's orange? Someone mentioned that the DEP permit has been in process for for twenty months.
Mr. Gallagher?
He didn't.
The question is for Mr. Gallagher. So if Mr. Gallagher doesn't know the answer, then if he does know the answer, he can answer.
I don't know the answer.
Doesn't know the answer.
So does anybody know the answer?
Mr. Plucker?
I'll I'll make it clear for the record, since I did mention it before, from the time my client initially applied for DEP permits in connection with this. Site plan application pursuant to the current ordinance and settlement agreement, from the time we applied. From the to the time that the approvals were granted, that was a twenty month.
Okay, was it this app, was it this development, this actual development?
Yes, it was. And again, I'm not the site engineer. I'm an attorney, so I would never pretend to be an engineer. Unless I slept in a Holiday Inn Express last night, but always wanted to try that one.
You're on the records.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have a question for Mr. Gallagher about his testimony? Seeing none, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. I'm sorry, Mr. Gallagher, one second. Mayor McCartney. Nope, never mind.
I do have a question.
Yes, good idea.
Okay. Hey, since Mr. Ephron, Mr. Plucker, the, uh, we would like to have, careful. A management conference. We would like to see an end to all of the information. So, Mr. Ephron, are there any other? People that you need to present to the board because we're trying to get summer dates? And we're competing with other agencies in town. So we want to have as many dates and we do have two dates in July.
June twenty-third and June thirtieth. Those are Mondays. They'd be here in person starting at six thirty.
Okay.
Right, now I'm available both days. We have a planner who would be available on the thirtieth, not the twenty-third. So I don't know. Whether we'll have witnesses on the twenty-third. Let me take a couple of days because there are some community witnesses. Who plan to testify, and if I can possibly have them ready for the twenty-third, I can do that. I wouldn't want to waste the night, but I wouldn't want people to come here. And we don't have anything to do.
We're trying to, we're trying to bring this to conclusion in August.
Well, one, one issue, of course, is when the applicant brings its supplemental geotechnical report, because that. Will potentially most likely cause us to bring an engineer in. So unless we, I'm not saying that they should know yet. And I'm not criticizing. I'm saying that's a factor that will affect all this. If if that report comes in in three weeks. Then staff need time to go over it, then ten days notice has to be given, then we need time to get an engineer after hearing testimony, so it's impossible to really predict. That much.
Predicting, we would like to try and have the board is of the mind to have this adjudicated in August.
I have no objection to that.
Going to work towards that.
I I I agree and I'd like to, but it depends in part on when that engineering information comes in. It becomes in July fifteenth. I don't see how that could happen, for example.
We're going to work towards that.
Uh, Mr. Chair, you had mentioned to me anyway that. At one point, you might consider a work, a working session with counsel and the board. I don't know if that's still.
Not the council. The council.
The board, I'm sorry.
The board.
The board.
And we will. That's going to be one of the first sessions in August. When everybody is done testifying, the board will review all the information. That is had heard and pick out information that our experts feel is relevant. We're going to look over the law. We're going to go look over the ordinance. And then we'll come to decisions on what we hear, what we use, and we may want to have additional testimony or read backs.
And I I, when we spoke, you mentioned counsel would be there with the board.
No.
Oh, that's what I understood you said.
No, the council can do whatever the council wishes, but this is a purely board review.
Okay, now would that occur before or after closing arguments from both Mr. Plucker and I?
Everybody's going to be finished and then the board will decide if they need to hear something again. Otherwise, we're going to go through all the information that's been processed. It's, it's been a long and meticulous process. We want to make sure that we get all the information in our hands.
Now, I just want to understand how you anticipated that working. And that would be, now, Diana McGovern, as McGovern mentioned, in August sixth, possible cutoff. Do you mean the hearings by then and then the board would have that meeting? Or where where does that date work?
That would be our first work session, the board's first work.
August sixth.
That's our regular meeting.
Right.
Great, no, thank you. I wanted to try to understand that.
Right.
Um, and then after that, the board would have a public deliberation.
Yes.
But before that, Mr. Plucker and I presumably would give our closing arguments. Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you.
There's also.
I do have a question.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Ephron, let's take a minute.
And somewhere in that time period, the community gets their chance to testify.
Oh, yes, yes, we're going to absolutely.
That's no, no.
Thank you.
Chairman, I had a question actually for our engineer. When we just heard that there's a fundamental concern with the design. As it relates to the water table.
Yeah.
Under your review, did you discover any inherent? Concerns with the design?
I'm going to ask one question before I can answer that. Did you get a chance? To look at the Princeton Hydro first report and this? Report, if you can, if you looked at both of them and you can give your expert opinion, you go right ahead.
Yes, I have. I looked at both of them. So the applicant submitted soil testing reports. Signed by geotechnical engineers. Uh, so I did note some similar discrepancies that Mr. Gallagher has noted. But the geotechnical engineer is licensed in the state of New Jersey and he's identifying the seasonal high water table at the. Elevations in his report. On top of that, the BMP manual from DEP requires post-construction testing. Soil testing for any infiltration system. So during, uh, really post-construction, during construction. The applicant will be required to ensure the seasonal high water table. And the permeability rates in those geotechnical reports are still current during and after construction. So that's all outlined in the NJDEP manual, uh, chapter twelve, uh, regarding soil testing. So. That will be a requirement for any potential, as a potential condition of approval. That that applicant will have to comply with those soil testing requirements during and post-construction. And if there's issues with that seasonal high water table that has been identified, it will have to be remediated by the applicant. Essentially redesigning the basin. Additional fill may be required, but all of that will be reconfirmed twice. One during construction and also post-construction.
And that's under the purview of the DEP, not this board.
Yeah, but we also then our stormwater code refers back to the DEP BMP manual, so the township will enforce those requirements.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our, our, our position, our position legally is yet to be said on this question. Um, in terms of what the engineer just said, in terms of whether there's any other role for the board to play, other than a post, a post-approval condition. Uh, we're going to look into and maybe address later on before August sixth. But I just don't want to be seen as necessarily agreeing. We're going to consider this issue.
Okay, thank you. The next.
There is one issue. I'm so sorry. My client raised an issue with me. This is not a criticism at all. Uh, we know some minutes are not yet ready and we wonder. Um, what role that will play in terms of, say, the work session and final approval. If minutes are not yet available. One of them is because of me, because I have to get exhibits. That's for February. Um, but there are other meetings and it's raised to me.
To work together.
Okay.
To make this happen in the public interest.
Absolutely. So my, the great issue's been raised to me by several client.
We're going to have good communication. We will not, the board will not terminate this application. Till the public hears, the board hears all the information. The objectors have a right to speak to the public. The applicant has a right to refute things. Our experts have a right to have their piece, and then the board will find time. I'm hoping we can do this by August. If it goes later, it goes later, but we're trying to work towards that. I figured I would just put this on the record.
Right, and the only thing I was raising is it's been raised to me several times that. There's a viewpoint that the minutes should be available before there's a final decision. So I'm just raising that because I know we're a bit behind, understandably, so there's a lot going on.
So we're working towards that end.
Thank you.
And we hear you. Thank you. Okay. So just for the record, I want to state that councilperson Susan Scarper, who sits on the planning board, was unable to come this evening. Uh, she has listened to the whole meeting on Zoom. She was not able to participate in the meeting. She will sign that she has, uh. That she has listened to the meeting and present that to our council. The next special meetings for this application, West Essex Highland. Uh, PB twenty-four dash oh one, block one seventy-nine, lap thirty-two, zone IH one, will be on June twenty-third. Monday at six thirty PM in person, and it will be available on. On Zoom for watching only, no comment, and Monday, June thirtieth. At six thirty PM in council chambers, uh, in person and available on Zoom, no comment, and Mr. Plucker.
Yeah, in the same vein as the reading of, you know, the transcript or watching prior meetings. I know we have a new member with us tonight who heard testimony, and I'm assuming, uh, he needs a few hours to get up to speed.
He will either catch up on everything or just his questions and not vote, but we will. We will, uh, we'll state that for the record prior to any voting on the application.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a quick question? I'm sorry, to what extent are transcripts? Have, are they being provided regularly to the board that the new member could read, or I don't know whether they're actually going to the board or not?
I don't have an answer to that.
I can answer that, I mean, then. Uh, the transcripts are on the website as the minutes too.
Oh, great, so transcripts except for tonight are available, so new members or those who aren't here could always read them.
Mm-hmm, and also, like I said, the minutes are also on the website, which you can get them from.
Thank you.
The only minutes that I'm basically missing right now is the April thirtieth. Which probably going to be adopted in the next meeting or until I get the transcript.
And the one you need exhibits.
Yep, that's it. So only two are, um. Left.
Thank you.
Thank you. I I I would like to also personally thank Mr. Joe Fagan, our Zoomist. For, uh, working with us so diligently and Yamalat, our board secretary, for being amazing. And these zoning official, who is here with us all the time, uh, upstairs, second floor is where she lives. But I want to thank her very much. And the next regular meeting of the planning board will be July second, twenty twenty-five, seven thirty PM via Zoom. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Mr. Catoza seconds on the motion. Any pose, right? Good. The eyes are above the nose. Have a good evening.